All right, welcome. It is Tuesday, September 26th. It is 6:02 PM. I call this meeting of the North Brookfield Board of Selectment to order. If you'll all rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th, 2023.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions?
No.
No?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number seven for $330,716.22. School warrant number 1018 for $61,590.40. General warrant number 1019 for $449,829.8 cents. And the wastewater treatment plant upgrade warrant 1020 for $383,023.51.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments?
They're moving right along on the sewer plant, digging and stuff down there. I've gone by, there's all kinds of construction going on there, so that's a good thing. That was it.
Okay, thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, first thing we have here is we have a request for ARPA funds for AED batteries. The change is from $296 to $531. They ordered additional pad sizes.
What is that for, the senior size?
It's for the town offices, so they originally ordered, they weren't, got approval to order adult pads and then we were told that we should order child and infant pads too, so that'll be the total with all of those pads.
All right.
Sorry, Jason.
No, it's fine. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve that change for the additional pad sizes to accommodate various ages of individual.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Parks and Recreation, $250 for a blade for asphalt cutting at the Town Common. That's not ARPA funds, that's out of their budget?
Correct.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the $250 for the blade for asphalt cutting at the Town Common for Parks and Rec.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motions been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Who's cutting? Does anyone need a new blade for your saw?
Yeah, just quite a bit of cutting to do, actually even a wall behind unit. And rather than utilize their blade, we'll use our own blade. There's no discrepancy. Hey, the blade was good when you got it.
Right, we figure it's only fair that, you know, we supplied the blade. Although, kind of way of John the other day with kind of plan over there. The plan is to remove the deteriorated asphalt on South Common Street side of the common there. You know, as we took down a lot of fencing around the old basketball court. Well, there's a part of that old basketball court that's still serviceable. So we want to kind of make a nice clean line along that and reuse that part. The rest of it's pretty, the old part of the old basketball court was resurfaced at one time, so there's some that's not too bad shape. But there's a big part of it going to South Common Street that's badly broken up and deteriorated. So we want to get rid of that and clean it up and make it usable.
And as usable, we talked about putting a...
Perhaps a pickleball court.
Pickleball court.
Okay, so that's the plan. And it may not be $250, we don't need to, let's spend that on blades we want, so that should cover the cost of the blade.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Highway, $400 for a hydraulic valve for the plow. And you want to take that out of snow and ice?
It was to a plow, so it's not a...
I'll entertain a motion to approve $400 for the hydraulic valve for plow for Highway, snow and ice.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mount, oh, let's see, 6:07. All right, Mount Pleasant Street Improvement Project informational session. You're here for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a poll hearing at 6:15, so we might have to cut you off and start back up again. All right.
Might not make it there.
All right, even better. All right, go ahead.
Where's the best place to just set the plane?
I think, I don't, can the camera see you over there?
Cameras can move back that way. You may want to pull your...
You pull it like behind where you're sitting?
Yeah, put it right behind there, yeah.
Yep. Even behind that last table, they should be able to catch it.
Those camera guys are pretty good.
They are good.
Well, that was pretty good. Yeah, probably best you're gonna get. Oh, they're moving it.
Oh, yep, they're zooming in on you.
Perfect.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, board, for your time this evening. Again, this is just informational update only on our FY21 CDVG project here in town. The Mount Pleasant Street Design Project, this project is fully funded for comprehensive diet, for comprehensive design, and we're going to do constructions in two phases. We've got Phase One of construction funded as well. So again, we have fully designed, funded, Phase One of construction funded. Phase Two of construction will require a future competitive CDVG application, likely in FY24. And we can talk about that in another meeting. So the context here, the need to do this project on Mount Pleasant was identified in the Westside Neighborhood Infrastructure Planning Study, which was also funded through Community Development Block grant funds back in 2021. The cost estimate for the Mount Pleasant Street Improvement Project was developed by Haley Ward Engineers. This is Mr. Doug Bush from Haley Ward Engineers. Project limits will include the entire length of Mount Pleasant Street from North Main Street to High Street. The design will address the current substandard conditions in drainage, water, as well as pedestrian and road system improvements within the entire project limits. Again, the project will be fully designed, or is it...
Pretty close to full.
Pretty close to completion design for the entire project. However, the construction will occur in two phases due to the overall project cost and budget limitations. So Phase One Construction, which is funded, will consist of installation of new water main, water service lines, hydrants for the full length of Mount Pleasant Street, and then temporary utility asphalt trench patches and repairs as well. Do you want to...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. Phase One's going to go from, well, the whole project's going to go from High Street to North Main Street. And Phase One's going to consist strictly of water line, services, shut offs, and new hydrants. And then subsequently, do a patch on top of that and make it a plowable surface until the next phase can commence.
So Phase One Construction is on track to go out to bid late this year. We're hopeful it'll be late this year. We have time in early 2024 as well. We anticipate having our construction contractor under agreement in early 2024 with a construction start on Phase One in spring. So that's on, spring, summer, 24. That's all we wanted to present this evening, just a perfunctory informational update. Again, this project's funded.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for coming up for that.
Thank you.
It's 6:15, we came in, so.
All right, good. Excellent. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one question. We're doing just the water lines?
The first phase. That, the part that he said, the first phase is fully funded, is just water.
So how are we doing sewer and drainage?
So that'll be in the next phase.
Do we have to dig up the water lines again, or they're going to be side by side?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah. So we have, I have it on the plan here. It might be a little hard to see, but the water line's running in parallel with the existing water lane along, you know, water line along the top of the road. And as you come down the road a little bit, a little ways, the drain is, is going to parallel the water line.
Okay, because we don't want to be digging the same thing out twice.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And that Phase Two is going to, once everything's patched, it'll be all reclaimed. The roadway will be reclaimed and put a new crown on the road and paved.
So how are we funding Phase Two? We're going out for another grant, or?
We need, we'll need to talk about, not in this meeting, I'll schedule another meeting with the board, but to make that decision locally. I'm working with Ashley.
I'll do, yeah.
No, I just, if you look back at a little bit of history, very similar sequence of events as happened on North Common. So if you recall any of that, it's essentially the same.
It's multi-year, it's sequential.
Okay, yeah, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Two more minutes. So CMRPC Contract Amendment.
Just extending it.
So to extend this contract through December 31st?
Correct.
All right, perfect. I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the Contract Amendment with CMRPC for fiscal year 2021 Massachusetts Community Development Fund Program Administration Services.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Ongoing project, so can I say it's stated?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a resignation. It says, please accept this email as my formal resignation from Parks and Recreation Committee. Current work schedule has had a significant impact on the time I had available for volunteer services. I've already missed several meetings and will not be able to fit into my schedule today either. It's my hope that I may return at some point, but right now it's not fair for me to keep a seat on a committee that I'm unable to contribute to. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve on Parks and Rec. I found it to be highly enjoyable and a great opportunity to learn new ideas and approaches from fellow committee members. And that's from Michelle Thayer. I'll entertain a motion to accept Michelle Thayer's resignation from Parks and Rec.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you for serving. She still serves the town in other aspects, so thank you for that as well. All right, at 6:15, we have a poll hearing. And that is for, just looking for the road.
So Brickyard Road, Brooklyn.
All right, Brickyard Road, National Grid, to install one pole on a Brickyard Road beginning at 25 feet north of the center line. All right, so it's a hearing, so if there's any, you're here representing?
National Grid.
National Grid, okay.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Zeehue. I'm an engineer representing National Grid. Here about the hearing about Pole 2-1. So the purpose of this is to represent our clients at Rashway Homes LLC. So they're essentially developing this entire corner property lot, just putting it up into parcels. And one of the houses is already pretty much finished. So in order to give them power to meet our head clearances, there has to be a wooden pole installed on this side of the road. Because the power is, is all on the other side of the road. So in order to bring that wires over to clearance, we need a pole there. It's going to be, it's going to be 35 feet tall. It's only going to have secondary power on it, so it's not going to be a lot of voltage. And that's essentially it. Eventually, this same pole will be used to feed to upcoming properties, most likely in the...
I would say the motion to approve the new pole on Brickyard Road.
So...
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions?
There's nobody here to give orders, nobody came to deliver on your payment. They were given letters.
I mailed them notices.
They gave you notices, okay, and nobody showed up to the meeting. Okay, just so everybody knows, it's on the other house.
So, since there's nobody to argue or whatever, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we have a contract for landfill sales. So this is a letter from Ethan Malat, the Chair of the North Brookfield Board of Health. So on September 18th, 2023, the North Brookfield Board of Health voted to accept detached proposal from Weston and Sampson for Engineering and Project Management Services related to repair of soils at the North Brookfield landfill. We received two proposals, both firms considered as responsive and responsible, and this was the more affordable option. The Board of Health requests that the Board of Slaughter execute this contract. All right. There was action. I'll entertain a motion to sign the contract.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Should we have somebody look at the contract before we sign it? Because we've done this before with contracts and down the road, one little thing messes us up. I'm just asking. I know it costs money to do it, and we're not lawyers either. I don't know if the Board of Health would have gone out and had it open.
Well, when's the deadline, you would say?
Let me see, deadline on that? I would think it would be good for 30 days at least, September 12th, so.
Does it make sense to have Tom come to look at it?
Well, this is for, just the bids, okay, that's right.
Yeah, the design is already done, so they're just basically going to put that design out to bid. And Ethan did say that if they found any reason that it needed to be redesigned, it would be included in the cost of this contract. So this would just be, you know, to get a construction company to come and bid on it. So we're not actually signing a contract for any construction at this point.
Right.
A lot of times, a lot of times the bidders will identify issues as well.
Right.
So say contract, you want to, you want to pay attention to that.
Don't sign that.
Actually, that's a good question. Yes, if you didn't read, you should read before you sign it because you don't know what they got ready for you.
Well, I can read it all I want, it doesn't mean I'm going to pick up on something.
No, but maybe she gets somebody like a lawyer or somebody, does the town have a lawyer? I'm not sure.
We'll wait till the next meeting.
Have somebody, a lawyer, read it, and then we'll get it.
amend the motion?
All right, yeah. So I'll entertain a motion to amend the motion to sign it at our next meeting after it's been looked at by Town Council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Ray, you're up.
All right, this is a, I was going to give an...
If you could state your name and address and all.
Raymond Bellagio, 6 Conroy Ave. I bought this house on Conroy Ave 14 years ago. This was an ongoing, before I even bought it, I didn't know nothing about it. I tried to get this thing fixed because it floods my property if I get torrential rain. The whole backyard becomes a lake. This is, Highway, you call it, you a commissioner or supervisor? Superintendent. There was two superintendents before him that I dealt with. And he wanted to take my, the yard and make a retaining on, dig a bigger hole, put rocks in it, and let it flood all my property.
And that was a previous super?
Two previous.
Two?
Two. This is the third one since I moved here, okay?
And Barnes.
So basically, nothing's been done on this property. I have four catch spaces on the property. This year was a bad year. I went through because it flooded my cellar. I have a dirt floor. I put stones in there, French drain, but I've gone through three water heaters and two sump pumps in my cellar this year. Due to all flooding because my sump pump's constantly running. And when it burnt out, the sump pump burns out, the cellar floods, and it destroys the water heater. Because the new water heaters are all sealed. So when you get the dirt underneath where it burns, it's a gas, gas water heater. It blocks all the holes and you can't get at it. I just want it fixed. Okay, I have Bradshaw Street. I looked at the pipes. You can tell by so-called catch spaces. Bradshaw Street comes on Brad Street, Bradshaw Street cuts towards the path that goes into this, to the school. Goes into my property, goes through a catch space, and then goes back out to Main Street. Over on Reed Street, this is all the stuff that's from raining and that, that goes down the street, goes into the, the catch spaces there. Goes into the pipe, that's where it's all coming from. 14867, all comes down here, down the main road, goes into Reed Street, through the property. I have a catch space over where it connects and over by Reed Street. Then there's a catch space at the end of Conroy Ave. Then there's a catch base where it turns to go towards the corner of my property, where it goes out to the street. So basically, it comes from the street, goes into my property, and it goes back out to the street. I just want it fixed, and my property, the pipes are lower than what's up in the street. So science classes I took, like I said to him, they always told me water don't flow uphill. So you're probably going to have to raise the property to put those new pipes in. It's in proper catch spaces because I believe these pipes were done back in the early 1900s, late 1800s, these were put in. I did have a book in my cellar, in my attic that I found. I gave one to the old, the one before him. It had the maps where the pipes were, and it also said in there that the reason why they did the pipes where they were is because it was easy to shovel by hand and dirt than it was with the rocks. This is before they invented machines. So he was saying it probably, it's cheaper to fix it in the property. I want it fixed. Because it's flooding the property. I can't use my property. I pay taxes for my property, and I can't use it. I got three and a third acres, and I can't use it because it floods up. It's like, it just, I can't do nothing. I can't even take a lawnmower and mow the grass in the back. It's, it, four catch spaces, and all four of them are illegal. You got to put new ones in there. Three of them, they're just, the pipe goes, ends, they shovel the hole, not these guys, this is back in the early 1900s. They went barnyard, okay? And then they just, four feet from there, they started the pipe. It was just a dirt catch space. So the water comes, falls up the dirt, blocks up the holes, okay? Two, two of the catch spaces, they can't even get to because of all the trees and everything's growing and that. You know, I, it's just, I want it fixed. I don't know how many times I can say, I've been saying this for 14 years. I want it fixed. This is actually an old business. And this year, I just got so pissed off because each water, water heater that I had, it was costing me 500 bucks. Well, a little more than 500, but I'm not, 500, I went through three this year. I'm on my third one this year, okay? 1,500 bucks just on the, on the water heaters, not counting the sump pump. I want it fixed. You had a grant, and the guy, I was on it, he put me on the committee. The guy said, we'll call you when we have something. I didn't hear nothing for a year. I come to the meeting, he says, I haven't got a, I tried getting a hold of you. I tried using your email. And I couldn't get a hold of you. He goes, well, you're the only one on this planet. I got relatives out of this country that talk to me, talk to me through email. You can't get a hold of me. And then he had two grants, I think it was $200,000 each grant. And he spent $400,000 to come back and just tell the town that they need new streets and sidewalks. So that guy just blew away $400,000, and that money was supposed to be used in to fix that. I don't know, I wasn't here to stack a meeting up because I didn't tell any of the neighbors. I know they tell me, my, you know, my property's getting flooded. I can't, I can't even cut my grass because my lawnmower won't go on soggy grass, you know? So I'm not here to stack, I, I just fix the problem. I'd like to see it back out in the street because where the pipes are, I can't use that area. And half of my property is pipes. And I own three quarters of that path that goes to the school, and on the other side of that, that's my property. So, I mean, it's, it's just, I have no, I can't use my property.
Okay, did you have anything you wanted to?
Not really, other than I, I, I think from an expense standpoint, you're talking some coin. And the fact that we own the easement for the pipe behind your home might make it easier because you're not dealing with street work. So from, from a monetary standpoint, it would be best to work the drain line where it already is. That's my...
All right, now to do that, you're going to have to get rid of all the trees.
Absolutely.
You're going to have to raise the land because that, those pipes are lower than out in the street. So you're going to get those, it's got to be four feet underground at least because of the frost line.
Well, we're going to, that's not true.
Huh?
They don't have to be that.
They don't have to be four feet, so you can put them up above ground?
No, well, some of them are, if you follow that line behind your house, some of the pipes are above ground.
Actually, no, not on mine, because I did follow the pipes before, when I first went out there, so.
But regardless.
Oh, you mean I got more drain lines on my property?
You might. So, but they don't have to be four.
I mean, I, oh, I did leave out too, I do have a hole in my yard. When they had it, the pipe that broke, they had to take the pipe up back in 2018.
All right, so let's, let's, give us a chance to look into this. Come back in two weeks when our next meeting is. That'll give us some time to look at it. We'll talk about it some more and see what we can come up with. Because it's a major operation and, well, to do what you're saying, and first, you got to, you got to remember.
I've been saying this for 14 years.
Right, you got to remember, it is your property.
I know it's my property.
How old's the house?
It was built in the 1800s.
Okay.
I found Tom, the guy that owned it, he was a town councilor back then, and he had town books. I gave you that book.
Yep.
From back to 1890, I found up in the attic, okay?
So, and, and that, that drain, does it in fact go back out onto Main Street?
Yes, it does.
Or is that the, go down behind the common?
No.
I think that one goes across Bradshaw and goes down.
If you, if you go all the way by Bradshaw Street, the corner house, that corner, green or brown, the one that's running a corner, go in the backyard, the catch space is right there, right on the corner of my property. And that's, that one is not dirt. That's kind of like a cement. It's kind of a weird looking thing. But you can actually see the pipe from Bradshaw Street where it comes down, comes in. And then you can see the other pipe that comes over from where my horse barn is. That comes over from that way. And the two pipes come in, and then there's one pipe that comes out to, towards the street, which all those houses are complaining because all those houses' cellars are flooding.
Well, it has been an inordinate amount of rain this year too. So, but let's keep the conversation going. Come back in two weeks when we'll talk some more. That'll give us a chance to look at the maps and look at some of these things and try to come up with some ideas.
Okay.
So where would that $400,000 you mentioned have gone?
Well, we got to look into that too.
If it was a grant, it may inspire.
And, well, we got to figure out if we actually had them and...
Right.
If we actually spent them, so. All right.
No, but I got no choice.
Thank you. All right.
I want to talk to you.
Want to read this?
Oh.
Okay, whatever you want to. I mean, if you want to... I mean, if you wanna, I mean, I'm gonna.
You've assigned the special state primary warrant.
All right, so the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, to either of the constables of the city or town of North Brookfield, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of North Brookfield who are qualified to vote in the special state primaries to vote at one polling location on Tuesday, the tenth of October, twenty twenty-three, from seven AM to eight PM for the following purpose: to cast your votes in the special state primaries for the candidate of political parties for the following office, Senator in General Court for the Worcester and Hampshire District. Hear of fail not, fail not and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting, given under our hands this twenty-sixth day of September, twenty twenty-three. And we have posted copies in town offices, library, police station, senior center, and post office as directed by town bylaws. The warrant must be posted no later than October third, twenty twenty-three.
All right, I'll obtain a motion to sign the special state primary warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Where it says insert polling locations, we say one. Should we let the town know that it's at the senior center?
Yeah, you know what? I thought it was coming later, but you're right. Yeah.
It'll say it on the one we sign.
Right.
Will it? Okay.
Well, it doesn't, actually. No.
All right, well, it's the senior center.
So, yeah. So, the polling location is the senior center.
On Forest Street.
October tenth, twenty twenty-three, seven AM to eight PM.
Some of us older people might forget where we go to the polls.
All right. So, the next thing we have is.
Need to be signed too.
What's that?
Those need to be signed too, for the poll.
Next thing we have is the electrical aggregation letter. John, you wanna read that?
Is that Honorable Jeffrey Roy?
Yeah.
To Town of North Brookfield, Board of Selectmen, the Honorable Jeffrey and Roy, House Chair, Joint Committee and Telecommunication Utility and Energy, State House Room Forty-three. The Honorable Michael J. Barrett, Senator, Senate Chair, Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities and Energy, State House Room One-O-Nine-D. Dear Chair Roy, Chair Barrett, and members of the committee, as municipal leaders committed to helping our residents access affordable electricity and providing options to combat the global climate crisis at the local level, we write to you today to voice our support and call for the advancement of H-3852 and Act Supporting Electrical Load Aggregation Programs in the Commonwealth, sponsored by Representative Tommy Vitolo of Brooklyn. H-3852 will empower municipalities with existing electrical load aggregation programs, also known as municipal aggregation programs, to more effectively update and operate their programs and foster the expansion of these programs to other cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. This bill was, this bill was informed by a diverse group of municipal leaders and aggregation program administrators with years of experience operating aggregation programs in our state. It was first filed as H-3219 by Representative Roy and S-2145 by Senator Lewis, and it was then refined into H-3852 filed by Representative Vitolo. Electrical load aggregation programs allow cities and towns to procure power for their own residents, often at a lower cost and with a higher clean energy percentage than what residents would otherwise receive through the default utility basic service. As a result, aggregation programs, especially those considered green because of their higher percentages of renewable energy, represent a vital tool for municipalities to advance local environmental goals in a cost-effective manner for their communities. Many, many communities with active programs achieved significant cost savings over the, over the past winter when basic service rates reached historic highs. While we recognize that the future savings cannot be guaranteed, we are proud of this accomplishment and know that we can do so much more. Legislature created load aggregation as part of the Electric Utility Industry Restructuring Act of nineteen ninety-seven, and by twenty thirteen, the DPU had established a review process that effectively authorized local officials to operate programs without regulatory impediments, provided that programs comply with specific consumer protections. Now, however, unwarranted barriers are hindering communities from taking full advantage of the opportunity presented by aggregation. Nearly half of the cities and towns in the Commonwealth do not yet have a program at all. Twenty-two of these municipalities have submitted aggregation plan proposals to DPU for review, only to get stuck in the queue, often waiting well over a year and in some cases over four years for a response. This excessive delay has deterred many of the remaining municipalities from even pursuing a program. The DPU currently interprets the statute to require that aggregation plans include nearly every detail of program operations. Therefore, any adjustment to those details requires a community to file a plan amendment with the DPU for its review and approval. State-level oversight is an important feature to ensure that programs function in a fair and equitable manner. However, additional guidance is needed from the legislature to recognize and clarify that aggregation rules must allow local municipal leaders to adapt their programs based on local decision-making. H-3852 would do just that. Under H-3852 and subject to review and approval by the DPU, aggregation plans would be required to describe the structural elements of the proposed programs, how they will be organized, how they will make decisions, and how they will set up their rates. Any changes to these structural items would require a plan amendment and approval by the DPU. The implementation elements such as specific renewal, renewable energy levels, electricity supply options, and format of letters to consumers would be governed by the local decision-making process outlined in the plan, and changes would not require an amendment. This clarification of responsibilities and authority would provide municipal leaders with the much-needed flexibility to adapt program operations more effectively and reduce the regulatory burden for DPU. Importantly, H-3852 also retains the critical consumer protections and adds additional provision that promote program transparency, transparency, and protect consumer data. It is important to note that the DPU opened a proceeding in August, twenty twenty-three to address some of the issues H-3852 seeks to resolve, such as reducing review time, clarifying rules for aggregation. However, the proposal falls short because it codifies the DPU's current interpretation of the statute. As an example, without thirty-eight fifty-two, if every aggregation program desired to add the same simple new offering, say a discount to low-income customers from community shared solar, the DPU would have to review and approve over a hundred and fifty amendments. Without H-3852, therefore, we can expect an ever-expanding approval backlog at DPU and continued restrictions on municipal decision-making. The result is that our aggregation programs will be unable to adapt to the needs of our communities or to the market. As communities across the Commonwealth feel the real-time environmental and economic consequences of the climate crisis and as we work to hit our statewide climate goals and transition to adjust clean energy, clean energy economy, it is more important that, than ever, that Massachusetts electricity consumers have access to energy options that are sustainable, reliable, and cost-effective as possible. We understand municipal officials, join our colleagues. We, the undersigned municipal officials, join our colleagues in the legislature in wholeheartedly and enthusiastically supporting H-3852 and respectfully request that you advance the bill favorably out of committee. Thank you for your support and consideration. I'm not gonna be able to talk later.
I know, that's why I gave it to you.
There's always that second wind though.
Is there a deadline for this? Do you know?
Yeah. Wednesday.
Like?
I can get it to them after, but they're trying to get everything to them tomorrow. I just got it last week and it was a week, so.
Have you been sitting on, is that what you've been sitting on, the aggregation things?
We, yes, we filed a plan with DPU in two thousand nineteen.
Nineteen.
An electrical aggregation plan, and they have still not approved it, but in.
So, we're one of the four years ones that they mentioned.
Yes, we are. So, we're part of a group of municipalities that are still waiting. They came back, but basically what it was is they were very over-regulating what the municipalities could do. And basically making it impossible for municipalities to have their own aggregation plans. It's essentially what it came down to.
So, you've been after them and we finally got something.
Well, the company that we're working with has been after them. They have attorneys that are working to try to.
Help us out.
Help us out, yeah, and let us get approval. And then obviously, history shows that when you submit a plan and it waits four years to get approved, if we need to make any minor changes to our aggregation plan, if we ever do get one, who knows how long we would wait for that to change. So, this would give us more control over our own aggregation plan.
So, it says not only can the town do better, but also some residents
Yeah, absolutely.
can get on the same plan.
Yeah, it would be, it would be town-wide.
Yep.
And people have the option to opt out. If they don't want to be part of the aggregation plan, they can get another supplier.
Yeah.
But it would effectively get us set in that. The goal was to get us set in at a lower rate when we were in twenty nineteen. Now we're in twenty twenty-three. You know?
I'll obtain a motion to sign this letter of support.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, so we finally have a document from the BSC Group for the downtown complete street project. It's the bidding services proposal. And is this something that has to be? Is there a date, deadline on this as well?
Um, he said it was good. Initially, he said thirty days, but I told him it wasn't gonna be done in thirty days because I read through it and everything. I was waiting for the final design. So, he said, it's fine as soon as possible. We can.
So, you put this till next time?
Yeah, he might.
All right, so we can have that contact with that as well.
Well, I wanna see the designs too, is that?
Yes, I'm gonna email you the designs. I couldn't print them out because they're gigantic pieces of paper that I don't have, so.
So, we'll pass over that for now. All right. Chapter ninety, project request and rap money. So, Barnes Road. That's to reclaim and then binder.
Weather permitted. The rap money, yeah, seventeen thousand dollars. And that's, I'd like to grind Charles Lane, turn it back to dirt because right now it's almost impassable. And that'll cover the expense, the prime grade of Charles Lane would be about sixteen thousand change in this seventeen rap. And the rap money doesn't require a project request.
So, when you say binder, reclamation and binder, is that the base coat of pavement?
Yes.
That's the binder. So, Barnes Road from where? Oakham Road to?
To
the corner of?
Right to the start of Charles Lane or in the end of Rufus Button, there's a triangle there.
To the triangle, okay.
Okay. All right.
And that's chapter ninety, which he has.
Yep, I'll obtain a motion to approve the Barnes Road project for chapter ninety.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Say the cost again. That part's missing from this, so I just wanted to.
It's not in there?
Nope.
Four.
It just, it says a dollar.
It's down, the rap money's down here.
Thirty-one, three fifty-six.
Ah, there it is. Okay. Thank you.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else for the highway?
I don't think so.
So, you're gonna do Charles Lane also, grade it to dirt?
But he said seventeen thousand. Can you just say, you said it was seventeen thousand?
It's two different things.
It's, it's two different requests.
Right.
He's gonna be spending about seventeen thousand dollars in rap money to grind Charles Lane. That's not part of this. This is a different road. This is Barnes Road. But they're gonna be.
I'm gonna hook them together.
Hook them together.
So, it's thirty-one thousand, three hundred fifty-six for part of it and a hundred twenty-two thousand, six fifty-three for the pavement. And that's chapter ninety. And then the other one is?
Rap money.
Rap money. Okay. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. That's all I just.
Wrap your head around it.
Pun intended.
So, am I good?
Yeah, we, we approved it. I just had that extra question.
Is there a back door ready?
Yeah, you go through right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the door with the window on it. Yeah.
Yeah, if you guys, if they're still out there, you wanna go out that way.
Which, which one?
This exit.
The one with the window. It says exit.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take a picture of them when I leave. They took a picture of me.
Are you sure?
I wanna take a picture of her.
Jamie gave these from the water.
October tenth?
You wanted me to bring it up?
I think so. Hang on, let me check.
I just wanna make it, because I wrote that down, October tenth.
It would be October tenth, yes.
All right, we have announcements. We have the local public access cable charter's back for survey is now on the town website. The Water Department will be conducting hydrant flushing from October second to November third. If you need information about the special primary election, you can see the town clerk for that. And then there is the townhouse. The Friends of the Townhouse are having their Oktoberfest Saturday, September thirtieth at Common Ground from eleven to five, and the proceeds will benefit the townhouse restoration. All right. Public comment period. Brandon.
Yes, uh, this for Michelle, for the nation, I would like to publicly thank her for being on the committee and helping us get rolling when we first formed. She was a big help and added a lot to the beginning of our committee. And just to let people know, we are looking for another member, so anybody's interested, contact a member of the committee or Tara Hayes in the town clerk's office.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Can I bring this up? Both the Water Department? Bring up whatever you want.
Okay. It might take more than two minutes. This is a letter from the Water Department. They brought this in front of the ARPA committee and were just kinda winked at and nothing happened. Dear members of the Board of Selectmen, the Highway Department is seeking ARPA funding an amount of eighty thousand dollars for a water main extension in lieu of discovering that the existing well system is not a viable source of potable water. The main extension would begin at East Brookfield Road, continuing up Donovan Road and ending approximately under fifty feet before Town Farm Road. This new water main will include eleven hundred feet of six-inch ductile iron pipe, one hydrant for fire protection in the front of the highway bond, and a one-inch domestic water service and two-inch utility service into the highway bond. The pricing and design. The pricing and design was done by the Water Department. If you have any questions, please contact the Water Department, Jamie Flamand. And this, this was talked about last year and it got pushed aside, but they're gonna need to have a bigger water main up there with a hydrant near the barn because when they fill up their water trucks for street sweeping and other things, and when they wash the trucks, the well just is not gonna keep up with that. The well was fine when we bought the building and we had the tank replaced and whatnot, but it's just not enough that the Highway Department can use for their domestic water things. This other one is the Water Department is seeking ARPA funding in the amount of $100,000, which was brought up over a year ago, for resurfacing our water storage tank. Upon recent inspections, it has been discovered that the grout joints between the panels of the roof structure on the tank are showing signs of spalling. Additionally, the paint, which protects the concrete tank and grout joints, is in dire need of a reco. Underwater Solutions Incorporated, who currently inspects and cleans our tank, has provided us with a quote, an amount of $100,000 to pressure wash, regrow, panel joints, and paint the entire exterior service, surface of the tank. This tank was, had to be put in when we closed the open water source up on Bell Hill. It was DP, DEP mandate that you couldn't have an open water source years ago, I'm not sure when they put it in. But now the tank is showing signs of, not wear and tear, but it's, it's aging. And I guess these concrete, they have a big tank, then they have concrete slabs that go up on a concave surface. And where the joints come together, the joints are starting to fail a little bit. So if that fails, they need, and you get ice and water buildup, Jamie was telling me this earlier. If that cracks, we're gonna have an awful problem with bacteria getting into the tank and possibly having a boil thing, he was telling me all the scenario and everything. But this needs to be done, and he's looking for ARPA money to do this. We talked about it before, there was a lot of talk about it, nothing ever happened. He needs to get this done, or we're not gonna have potable water in the Tower North Brookfield. He'd like to get something done as soon as he can so they can get at least part of the painting done and the caulking and sealing on the joints. So, if we can move on this, and apparently, ARPA is holding funds for another project, which I understand, but these are projects that need to be done. And if, if the ARPA committee doesn't act on this stuff, we're gonna be in dire need of these things. And what, Water Department isn't gonna have, be able to pay for this. And neither is the town gonna be able to pay for the water down at the, at the Highway Department. There's so many projects in this town that need to be done. The tree warden mentioned to me last week that he brought a proposal to the ARPA committee, which is an advisory committee, which should be advising us on, can these projects be done with ARPA money? That's the advi, I would think that's what they should advise us on. When somebody brings something to this, to the Board of Selectmen, which is, I think is the process, not to the ARPA committee, we can send it to the ARPA committee and say, look, they wanna do this. The ARPA committee should have read the book that's about this fat, thick, sorry, I didn't say fat. And then advise us if these projects can be used, can be paid for by ARPA money. And that's, I think, what they should be doing, advising us if these can be paid for with ARPA money. Not something else that is on their agenda, they shouldn't have an agenda. The tree warden asked for $45,000 because their budget was cut in half, I believe, I'm not positive of that. Yesterday, during the rainstorm, another tree branch came down on the road right up the street from me and put out power to about nine houses. And it was a big, old, fat, good-sized tree branch. It came down, hit the wires, and blew the fuse on Hillsville Road. If we can get some of this dead wood off of the streets that are on the wires, I think we should do it. And he brought that proposal to the ARPA fund, ARPA committee, and they just kinda pushed him aside. I don't think that's right, because that money, that's infrastructure and it should be done to get stuff so that our roadways are safe. That's it.
That's it?
Thank you.
Are you done?
Well, I wanna thank everybody for helping Brandon and I do the playground over there. We mentioned the last meeting, you asked if I was done, I thought it was. We asked at the last meeting for people to come and help. I just wanna thank everybody that came and helped, so Brandon and I did most of the work over there, because nobody showed up. Thank you anyway. Okay.
All right. I will, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.